We have and Wally, the Substance Use Committee during our talk about where you want to go with that. Okay. Any other questions about that homework assignment? And I do want to take a moment just to welcome Mark Schmelz to our board representing Hampton. Very happy that you're here, Mark, and that you volunteered to serve the community and so welcome. Do you want to say anything? I'm putting you on the spot. I'm prepared.
Just glad to be here. People didn't know everyone and surprised me.
Great. We're happy to have you and feel free to reach out to anyone as I mentioned if you have questions along the way.
Mark, yesterday, Mark, you might want to remind your fellow members you have two children in school because that's very valuable.
I do. So Lilly is a fourth grader and Weatherby and Lucas is a first grader at Grau.
Keep that in mind as we have an elementary representation.
Great. So move on to personnel.
We have nothing under A and B personnel, so let me draw your attention to the agenda notes at this time. I'm going to recommend the inter-executive session to discuss a legal matter according to one M R S A section 4056E and that also Melissa Huey, our district attorney, will join us in that session.
Great. All those in there?
We're going to go to the library, folks. Mrs. Moore has a setup in the library.
Patience.
Okay, so we go to item number seven, superintendent of schools, reading its education outcome proclamation. Keith, Mr. Miller.
Cheese.
Did I cut that?
You do that. I said that in the end.
Okay. Education enables all students to learn skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenging needs, challenges of changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of the communities to participate and our schools will have the supportive and priority atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Heath. Item B, I think as I informed you before, a new initiative that Reagan are going to be starting this year is a quarterly community public forum. The one on December 4th is already taking shape. I'd ask you to put that in your calendar, please attend if your schedule permits. We're going to have the majority prior to the evening is going to be the athletic turf field discussion of the athletic committee is taking place currently along with the building committee as well and we have some nice components there. We're actually going to be meeting with our town managers to give them an overview before the December 4th meeting as well. And you'll see this quarterly public forum come up obviously every three months with hopefully different themes as well. So the first one is December 4th, that's at 6:30 to 8 o'clock again in the academy. So please again see if your schedule permits your attendance. Under personnel recognition tonight, we have Mrs. Seer, our principal from Weatherby, as a honoree and a guest with us. So Jen, if you would, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to be with you. I have the great honor of traveling down last week with Reagan to the Muscat Conference where Kelly O'Brien Weaver was honored as Maine's, and this is elementary, middle, and high school Maine School Counselor of the Year by her peers. There's only one award given and she is incredibly deserving of this honor. While I'm new to Weatherby, I'm not new to Kelly. We're both H A grads, proud, and so you know certainly she comes from high pedigree of educators, both of her parents being outstanding, and so she has set those very same standards for herself. Also, we worked together at Leonard Middle School where she did her internship and so I've seen her go from the very beginning of her journey to now leading the technical. Tina Boone was instrumental in nominating her and was one of the key recommendations in her nomination. When Kelly was awarded, one of the things they really recognized was her outstanding use of data, her expertise at all levels of education, being a high school teacher, a middle school teacher, and having the elementary school experience as a guidance counselor. So Tina had some wonderful words and I thought this was a nice way to encapsulate Kelly's great candidacy for this award. She said Kelly is not only an exceptional counselor, she is a stellar teacher. She is, or exemplifies best practices in all that is guidance. Her natural leadership capacities are equally reflected in her commitment to her own continued personal growth. You should know that she's halfway through her national board certification and she elevates our own performance as a staff, making sure that we're reaching the higher echelons of what should be happening for best practices, not only in our school but our district. And so I'm so incredibly proud to welcome Kelly and her husband Scott, who was by her side as well. So Kelly, come on up.
Come on up, Kelly.
You can applaud. I hear you. I've been there with Kelly, you know, since last Thursday. We had a staff gathering today where she did turn a lovely hue of red, which I tried to deepen, and I said I was going to keep going. I'd like to invite you all, next Tuesday, we'll be having a celebration at the end of the day and end of the school day assembly. Mr. Lyons will join us and also intend to invite the local media to celebrate. This is our annual all schools share, so this is, you know, something that we do, but we recognize that we have a gem in Mrs. O'Brien Weaver. So I'll stop talking now and you can accept your congratulations.
Okay, Kelly, congratulations. It's all yours, please. How much to the board, Kelly?
I did not prepare any comments for the board. I guess one thing that I could share is that when I graduated from college, I was kind of brand new, ready to start my whole new life and I landed in a school in Western Maine and I was given a mentor and I was a high school Spanish teacher and I said one day to her, I said, I think I really want to be a school counselor. And she said, nope, you cannot be a school counselor. Not, you definitely cannot be a school counselor. And I said, oh, okay. And she's like, you're a teacher. And so I kind of took those words to heart, thinking, well, I guess I'm not a school counselor. I guess I'm a teacher, but a few pretty hard life lessons later and I realized life was pretty short and you do what you want to do and I'm just so happy that not only I made the choice to be a school counselor, but also that I have landed in a community that accepts and really wants their students to be held to high rigor and I just wanted to thank the board for providing an opportunity for our students to do well, but also for me to have a job that I just really love. So thank you.
Kelly, we might also, Kelly, want to share with the board that you actually also are the co-director of guidance K through 12, the entire system. And that's very uncommon because in my tenure here, prior to your appointment to that, the director of guidance, right, wrong, or indifferent, has always been at the secondary level. So we kind of split that off where you and Joe Kenny obviously are the co-directors. Yeah, that's very important. And also Kelly's picture is on the front page of Lake 22. So you'll see that. There's 6,000 pictures coming out, Kelly, in about a week. Okay, thank you very much, Kelly. Congratulations. What I'm about to say, please don't take it as self-serving. I also apologize for my voice tonight, but I want you to put in perspective Kelly's recognition tonight because Mary G. Art reminded me of this. I don't know the years, but here in the last 13 years, you've had the director of curriculum to say the name, Mary G. Art. What year was that, Mary?
2015.
2015. And I think the year before, this district had the assistant superintendent of the year, the evil tennis. And believe it or not, I was the superintendent of the year in 2004. So in 13 years, you've had the superintendent of the year, the assistant superintendent of the year, the guidance counselor of the year, and the curriculum director of the year. I think that's pretty good in a district our size and in central, we're not northern, central, I think that speaks well of the commitment that Kelly taught about that we all do and you folks do every single meeting for the 2,421 children as of last Friday in Hampton's district. So thank you. Board meeting schedule, we all showed up tonight, that's a good sign. So as we now know, we're moving to the monthly meetings and next meeting we'll be back at Hampton Academy, so please put that on your refrigerator at home and we'll move that forward. The principal reports, again, I put those in there, now you'll see those obviously on our monthly meeting. Please express any comments or if you have any comments, you can certainly email our principals as well. Again, this is a new initiative for us this year, hopefully with the intent to give you a good overview of the school from the principal's perspective. Karen mentioned to me tonight, I think Karen, if I remember, you've never been in this school, for example, before. And I mentioned to her, and I might get the years wrong, Rob, but help me out, and I think in 1998, we did a $6 million renovation of this school in 1998.
Expansion, yeah.
Right? And I mentioned to Mark, I think, and Karen, and I'll never forget that endeavor because we were remodeling this school while we had 300 children in it every single day. That was quite a venture. And you imagine building a house with 3,000, with 300 people in it, and that's what it was like. So that, this school has really come a long way in the last 20 years or so. Okay, Reagan.
Okay. Most recently, I would report to you that we are continuing to evaluate some of the damage that has occurred due to the windstorm and our insurance company, Liberty Mutual, I just must say to you, their service has been outstanding. The response time was literally within 24 to 36 hours. We've already received a check from them to start our work. We have 108 downed trees on the Hampton campus and so we're starting to make a plan and prioritize how those will be addressed. And as you can imagine, many of them are on the Reeds Brook Trail system and so we're going to be working with the Reeds Brook Trails Association because we would like to have winter activities, be able to utilize the trails and have those cleaned up. Further from that, I would say to you that both athletic committees and the building committees are moving forward to endorse the replacement of the turf and the public forum that you heard about already tonight will emphasize the different components to having that replacement potentially take place as soon as summer of 2018. So if you would like to participate in any way, we do have an ad hoc committee off of the athletic committee that will be meeting and our next meeting is Monday, November 20th and you are certainly welcome to join us if you have any interest in that effort. We do have a couple of community members to go join, which we appreciate.
All right, Lucas, sir.
So over the past few weeks, I've been trying to gauge student interest in kind of verbal responses and approaching the student representative in terms of saying things that they might have for the board or concerns within the school and the district, just to try to get an idea of if people would be willing to actually approach somebody and if not, in terms of the student response survey that I've been working on. And I've found that even to the people I've talked to, some do have ideas but have been reluctant to approach anybody in the past because they see it as kind of a big wall to try to get through and some of them consider it something that they might not be able to do as a student. So I think it's important that I try to make the students feel more empowered and let them recognize their ability to actually make changes in the community. So I'm going to do that through the implementation of the student response survey, which I'm projecting within the next two weeks and hopefully by that time I'll be able to go over any student responses that I've received in order to gauge the involvement and their willingness to respond in electronic form instead.
I think also, Lucas, the example that Mrs. Nichols mentioned tonight, the students' awareness of the efforts to replace the athletic turf field, so they know that that's a major undertaking that obviously benefits our students and the associated cost with that, so their awareness of that certainly would be something that would be very advantageous as well.
That survey goes up to all high school students?
Yes.
That's a good point because you talk to a lot about how you're going to get the feedback from them. I'm wondering your thoughts on getting the information to them, you know what I mean?
Yeah, like a prompt.
Right. That would be interesting.
Thank you, Lucas. Whoa.
Excuse us.
Okay, it's all right.
Both might have broken a table or two.
Okay, Cam, thank you.
All right, we're going to move into questions of board members. We do have them adjusting to the agenda.
We do. So what I would, if Fred and I could go first, and we'll certainly address any board members' questions. So Mr. Lowers in the audience with us this evening and Mr. Tracy, unfortunately, could not be with us. So Fred Lowers, you all know, is our athletic director, assistant principal of high school. You all have a handout. And this is a public conversation that we all have become aware of in the last five to seven of the business days. So Fred and I thought it would be advantageous to walk us through from the beginning to end, these are our thoughts as we go through this. Please stop us with any questions or points of clarification so that when you leave this evening, you have complete clarity and understanding on how this topic came about. Okay? So Fred, I'll start and please intercept and interject as I go through. So the chronology of events started on October 17th and I've included the email and I want to accentuate here anecdotally that this email went to the board with the exception of Wally. And also, I was not on the email. I thank Heath for sending the email to me that I became aware. Then I sent the email to Wally and to paraphrase what Wally said, Wally said, what is going on here? And then I sent him the information, so he came up to stop as well. So upon receiving the email, as your superintendent, that's when I became involved. And also I want you to know that as a result of the email, I emailed the father and asked him to call me, which he did that day. So I actually had a conversation with the father very early on with respect to the allegation at hand. The next exhibit for you is to note that I received an email because the email that the parent sent also sent it to the Department of Education. And I received the email from Courtney Behr on November 15th to basically charge me to do an overview with respect to the oversight of our athletic director of that particular game. I want to stress something right here of very important and very significant. Notice the email only asked me to do the investigation of Mr. Lowers. It did not ask me to do the investigation of the assertion or the allegation of harassment. And I know Fred may be a little bit uncomfortable, but he knows this anyway. The email basically asked me to look at the proper supervision or A D because there was a concern or complaint that Mr. Lowers was on the cell phone. That was the essence of the allegation or the assertion that Mr. Lowers was not given the proper attention. The very next day, I met with Mr. Lowers and Mr. Tracy to tell them I received the email that I've been directed by the Department of Education to do so. I gave them, I think about a two-week window whereby I asked them to do an investigation, both of them, and they reported to me by the middle of November. I had the report last week, so you can see they did their task very appropriately so. And maybe right here, Fred, I would stop because now we're at the summary that you provided me and also Bill Tracy, so maybe you might just want to summarize that if you would, please, Fred.
Sure. In response to Mr. Lyons requesting a report, I went back through my notes of the investigation, which actually started the morning after we initially heard about a complaint. Mr. Tracy had gotten an email from the young lady's mother. So the next morning, I started at that point and as you can see, it's in your packet, the report started out, summarized the events of that night, pointing out there were a few things that had to be addressed. We had some young boys behind the goal during the JV game and that was addressed and then dealing with the student section during the game. So I just gave you an overview of what happened and also what happened after the game as parents were on the field, both teams cleared, officials, and we wrapped up the night. Then go into the actual investigation. So the morning, we received the initial email at 9:45 that night on the 12th. Mr. Tracy did. I was copied into it. It was not sent to me. I was copied in along with the A D from Camden Hills. So starting the next morning, Friday morning, I was immediately in contact with the A D and began the investigation process and that's outlined there. I interviewed students that were in the student section, players that were on the girl soccer team that were participating in the game, coaches, other staff members that were also present at the game. And the Camden A D was doing the same on his end. Talked to him at the end of the day, there's a couple of key points, talked to him at the end of the day. The young lady in question was not in school, so we agreed, I reported my findings, we agreed that we touch base again the next Monday and I reported that to Mr. Tracy, the principal. On Monday, called him Mr. Alex Back, first thing in the morning, and he informed me that she was not in school that day also, but that he was meeting with the mother, he had had contact with her, and that we would touch base on Tuesday. During this time, we continued to kind of investigate what was, things at Hampton Academy and talking to people that potentially could have heard or not heard the allegations. On Tuesday, I once again spoke with the A D. At that point, he had met with the mother. I'll back up. I asked him on Monday that when he met with her to make sure that we were taking this serious, that we were doing an investigation and that if it had been heard, it would have been addressed and if we found that anything was said, it would be taken care of and addressed. And he assured me that he would do that. On Tuesday, when I talked to him again, he said the meeting went well, that he explained to her our investigation, his investigation, which included talking to members, other members of the soccer team, members of the field hockey team who had played the week before, and his coaches also. And in all three cases, there were no reports that anyone else had heard these same allegations. So the girl soccer team that played, field hockey team, and his coaches, in fact, his coaches were, they were not aware there was any issue at all. This was the first that they had heard. The only thing he did say is that the girl soccer team and field hockey team said that they heard students calling their name and their number and that was the extent of what was being called. In his opinion, he said she left happy. Her only concern was that if they played there again, there was no retaliation, but he felt that the meeting went well and in his words, he said, I believe the investigation and the issue is concluded. And so that was the last that I talked with him up until today when we started some conversations again.
Mr. Lowers, you might want to also mention that what you and I just learned this afternoon, when Mr. Tracy called me.
Yes.
They indicate that a student volunteered to leave the classroom to get out to Mr. Tracy to offer to Mr. Tracy that he himself had attended the game and he himself had witnessed no terms that have been moving around in the communities. And furthermore, Mr. Tracy then asked the student for the names of two other students.
These were the three boys that were on the hill behind the.
Go ahead.
These were the three young men that were behind the goal during the JV game and they were very concerned because of the media and there was talk around school. So the young man came down, was very concerned. If someone did say these things, what would happen? Would they be expelled, so on? Mr. Tracy did further investigation, tried to find out exactly what was said. The boy was unclear. He said, you know, we were kind of harassing her, yelling her name, and so on. When Mr. Tracy asked specifically the allegation, that stated, the student was very shocked, even more scared, said absolutely not, nothing like that was said. The other two boys that were with him were called down, same situation, they were questioned and the other two said absolutely not. We were being rowdy and we were cheering her on to the point where we were probably a little bit obnoxious, but we weren't saying anything sexual or inappropriate. In, yes?
How many parents, we've also had several parents come forward saying they were sitting in the stand right there and they heard nothing.
Yes. One of the allegations and that's come on the report is that the field hockey team also reported similar behavior the week before. In immediate response, we had emails from two field hockey mothers that were sitting directly next to our student section and both adamantly say that there was nothing inappropriate, that our student section was fantastic, they were very loud and cheering on, but nothing inappropriate. Today, we had a mother of a student that was in the student section at the soccer game. She was not at the game, but when this broke, she sat her daughter down because she knew her daughter was there in the student section and asked her, what went on? Did you hear anything? The daughter said absolutely not. In fact, the only thing that she heard was that I had come over and addressed the students when I had heard that they were calling out names and numbers and one of the students had a roster that they were kind of looking at. This student also said that there were some kids that were addressed that were sitting behind the goal and these were the young men that were there during the JV game. In addition, I just found out at about 6:30 before I headed down, I got a call from our varsity girl soccer coach. He had been contacted now that the news had broke by four adults that were, three parents and another adult, that were at the game, sitting next to and behind the student section and all four say that absolutely there was no inappropriate sexual comments and they were there for the entire game. So that was the most latest at 6:30 tonight.
Thank you, Fred. Obviously, this is very much public. The next handout I show you is the Facebook page where the article, kick verbal abuse, sexual innuendos of Maine game fields. I also want to inform you that yesterday Karen and I were contacted by two TV stations in Portland, W M T W, W C S H. They wanted us to go to Lincolnville because they were going down to interview the father and the girl yesterday at noon time, which they did. If you haven't seen the clip, you can just Google W M T W. I did also learn it was on W A V I, which is basically the sister station of W C S H, the other Portland station. So that's why obviously the public arena is very much wide right now. Then as a result of that, Karen did, I thought, a superb job in eliciting from the board a public statement, which actually was on the W M T W newscast last night that I observed at about 9:30 or 10 o'clock. So that was, they had a clip of that as well. Now I'm going to kind of digress for a moment. I did listen to that clip last night and I was very, very concerned about the comment of the superintendent of schools in Camden. So I emailed her calmly last night and asked her to call me this morning, which she did. And basically, she took the theme of the soccer situation and made it very clear that there were other improprieties in field hockey a couple of weeks ago. And I said to the superintendent, because I talked to her Monday, I said, you never mentioned that to me Monday. And I think it would be fair for me to say that she was very apologetic to me because if you deal with the media, there's always one key clip they want to take away. And she gave an overview that she made it very clear to me that she was appreciative of what our A D principal were doing and my contact with her. And she tried to accentuate that we were taking this seriously, but that she had some reason about the field hockey theme, if you will. And what the media captured was the field hockey theme, none of the other golden nuggets that she shared with the media. So just as another point, I've had contact on two occasions with the superintendent. The public statement, I think Scott publicized on our Facebook page very quickly and that's present. One thing that I'm very proud of is I did a little bit of searching myself and I've included the mission statement of Hampton Academy and notice the social and civic expectations at the bottom and the three bullets associated with that. But one that I was actually extremely pleased with was the code of conduct and for the benefit of the audience, I'll read the first two sentences. As part of our social and civic expectations, Hampton Academy students are expected to demonstrate respectful, honest, responsible behaviors. Below is a matrix of how these behaviors are demonstrated in various settings at Hampton Academy. And notice the column that says extracurricular, the fields. Our student athletes, our students exhibit those behaviors, not in the classroom, not in the hallway, but also on the athletic fields as well. And I thought that was a very significant part to ground a message here. So basically in summation, I do want to say I really appreciate what Fred has done and what Bill has done to really look into this. We've taken it seriously. These are my words. I'm going to ask Karen to mention as well. We're not saying what the young lady is saying is not true. Our effort to investigate was to validate, to affirm, so that if we had other names of people that said, yes, I observed that, we could talk with them and get the closure to that or the affirmation of the true story and we have not been able to do that yet. And we'll continue to certainly listen to people and if they have a story, we'll listen and if it changes anything along the way, then we will do what we need to do. We take this very seriously. We do not condone this behavior. As you can see, it's very well articulated what our expectations are and we'll make sure that we do everything we can to make sure that we adhere to that.
Right. And I would say based on some of the emails that we've gotten from Bill, this has obviously generated quite a discussion among the high school, among the student body, because this is their reputation and they feel very proud to come from Hampton Academy. But I also think we can't be naive enough to think that our kids are always. Um, but I also think we can't be naive enough to think that our kids are always acting appropriately and on their best behavior and always golden in sportsmanship. And so I think this is a lesson for us all. Um, I know it's, uh, certainly a reminder to Fred and to Bill that there's always room for improvement when we're working and expressing our code of conduct with our students and talking about the code of conduct with our students, and, um, and I know that they both have a plan to, to focus on that moving forward. So I just want to say, I appreciate the work that Fred and Bill have done. Um, I think it's pretty clear from the investigation that, um, Fred acted very appropriately, um, and took care of the issues that he was aware of at the game. And, um, so that report will be sent to the DOE, um, and-
Matter of fact, I'll, I'll chime in there. I did the, uh, the final report today, and I did conclude unequivocally that Mr. Lowers' report and, and my conversation with him in no way indicated he acted unprofessionally because of the assertion of the, of the, uh, the cell phone, that he did ensure the proper behavior of our students. And again, that was the narrowness of the report or the, or the directive of me. Furthermore, I added to the Department of Education that we will extend all opportunities with the Main Principal Association, because they do a lot of professional development with our coaches, that we'll invite them to Handen Academy and our middle schools, as a matter of fact, as well, to make sure that we take advantage of what they can offer. And, and just through irony and recollection, remember the person A.D. now we had, uh, and the M.P.A. is our former A.D., so we have a golden nugget there that we can take advantage of. So the theme is, we have seven hundred and forty-one students at Handen Academy. We all know seven hundred and forty-one students are students. And as Karen mentioned, we will certainly direct them in the proper way or redirect them in the proper way when we have knowledge and experiences to do so. So Lucas, I don't want to put you on the spot, but obviously, you're a, you're a Handen Academy student. Any comments as we kind of wrap up the overview?
Well, I'd like to talk for a minute about what Karen said about the reputation that Handen students have for themselves and that they try to withhold. And I absolutely agree with her statement that students, uh, Handen Academy students have, they've had, hold themselves to a high level of accountability. We are proud to wear jerseys and attire with Handen Academy, and we are aware that things that we do represent our school and our community. So I just like to make that clear as well.
Thank you. Okay, so any board members have any questions for Fred or myself in that overview?
Can I, can I just point out?
Absolutely.
That I was, and I want to highlight, that I was so happy to see that the Reeds Brook cross-country team got the sportsmanship award, and that's not unique to our district. So while we might have had a couple of mistakes made at a game, um, and we've learned from that, that's not unusual for our R222, um, and I want to make sure that we continue on that trajectory, and I have no, I have, I have every confidence that we will.
I don't want to dominate the conversation, thanks, but please, but that's a good point. I've been here a long time. I was a basketball referee for seventeen years. The wins and losses are important, but every time we have Russ Bartlett, I'm looking at this more, Russ Bartlett teaches here, and we had many coaches over my tenure here get good sportsmanship awards in students. So again, that's a hallmark of this district that we can't, uh, not recognize this evening as well. Fred, did you have time?
Also, I just hasn't, they haven't been awarded yet. Uh, our girls' soccer team was, uh, awarded the sportsmanship award for the Kennebec Valley Athletic Conference, and tomorrow night, our football team would be recognized at the Class B state championship game, uh, excuse me, Friday night at Orno. Uh, they are the Class B Northern Sportsmanship Award winner.
Very nice.
Let's make sure that that gets, gets out there, because that's well deserved.
Any questions or any thoughts of anyone at this time? Because again, obviously, Fred and I are both here.
Uh, so the timeframe for, I mean, does the Department of Education rule on this, that it's, everything was done appropriately and it's closed?
I'm assuming I'll receive a response from her probably in the next couple of weeks.
And who responds to the parents about this, once their findings, isn't, do they?
Maybe the, the DOE request was only on Mr. Lowers.
That's correct, that's correct. Yeah. So I want to try to understand your question. What response did the, the parents make? What parents, John?
The parents of, the, well, the, the students that are, that's accusing-
We've already sent the response.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes. Anything else? Okay, so if you have any questions after you think about this over the night or tomorrow, by all means, send me an email. Uh, hopefully, we can bring this to closure for everyone having the awareness that you need to have this evening. So Amanda?
I have a comment. I have a, sorry, this, it's, first of all, I want to thank everyone who was involved in the investigation. Obviously, we saw a lot of traffic about this, and, um, I was very impressed with the respectful response and the very quick response by our district. I, I get concerned about this. There's two things. I don't understand what it is that justice would look like for these, because I, I see this response, yet there's still this constant attention to the media and this, and this eliciting of the media to, and I'm not sure what it's for. Um, and I'm also, I don't know what they want out of it, and I, that does concern me. And I'm also, it makes me nervous for all of our students, because high school, they are students, and this is a time that we should be able to make mistakes and, and learn from them. But I, I think when things become so public and so heated and, and brought into the media, all of a sudden, it's not a safe place to misstep in any way, and that, um, we lose that opportunity to have those very open dialogues and conversations with our students. And so I just feel, I, I fear that the next time a student makes a mistake, which there will be, we won't, uh, there'll be a tendency to hide it or to maybe not take responsibility for it, or maybe not have those rich conversations that we typically would, um, for fear that all of a sudden, everything's going to be in the media and spread everywhere and on social media. So it's just, these, these are kids, and I just worry about, um, how public some of these allegations go and how quickly they go, and I just want to make sure that people remember who they're talking about, um, that's engaging in this behavior. These are not adults at all, so.
My comments, that would be well said.
And this is happening, unfortunately, at every high school in the state of Maryland. So I think we just have to do our best, and-
We weren't even able to corroborate that it actually happened, though, so it's strictly an allegation, so to, to put blame on our students, I think, is out of place. I mean, there's nobody that can corroborate that this even happened, so it's an allegation, and to put shame on our students, I think, is completely baseless.
I don't think it's shame. I think that we do know there were some inappropriate things said, and Fred handled them, um, so-
Well, do we know that? Nobody corroborated it.
We do in the report. It's not the sexual harassment claim, but there was other behaviors that were addressed that day.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's fair. Bye.
What was addressed was our students calling number seventeen, Jan.
Right, and the song.
The song was not, there were no inappropriate lyrics.
So what's the point of having a roster with names and numbers if you can't address the athletes? Are, are we not allowed to?
I think some of the things that I've seen is that, like, they were heckling them more than anything.
And?
And it was addressed, is what's wrong?
It was addressed. It was immediately addressed, that all of our, uh, comments would be posted toward our team members.
Let me also remind you, having been there, you have gatekeepers in these activities. They're called referees.
Did they document anything?
No. That was, that was another concern totally I had, having been there. I can, I can assure you that, having been on the basketball court, which is forty-five by ninety.
Yes.
You can hear a lot of things. And if someone, someone knows what's going on, it's the referee.
I mean, when I played high school sports, there were unsportsome-like conduct penalties given to our team or other teams, and that's the job of the referee.
Right, that's right, that's exactly right.
It's not the job of the athletic director to monitor everything that's said in the stands, so if the referee didn't document anything-
Exactly. That's right.
There's a procedure in soccer where referees can give a yellow card to spectators.
That's right.
There's still, we don't have to belabor this, but I think that the admin do have a responsibility on this.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, now you got your questions.
Other questions? On the board?
I'm sporting my purple again today. Today was Special Olympics, um, state bowling tournament, and fifteen of our students in this district, or literally three schools, were there. There were, I didn't get the medal count, but I know at least one gold medal, so.
I, the way they give awards, it can't be present for everyone that gets awards, but, um, I spoke with, um, Andrea Lee, who's the Special Olympics head coach for Handen in Winterport, and, um, she just wanted me to thank the board for supporting the Special Olympics and let everybody know what an honor it is for her to be able to watch all of our athletes grow and develop through that program. And, um, she also wanted me to share that we are going to drill over the Special Olympics Winter Games this year, and we'll be representing snowshoeing, alpine skiing, and snowboarding. Um, so it's really exciting for the Special Olympics team and our district. Thank you.
Other questions? Committee reports, by news.
Yep.
What's that?
We're reading next week.
Next week. Athletic committee?
Uh, yep. Uh, the report that's in here is actually a report that I recorded on last meeting, uh, but this is in here for review. Uh, the turf replacement ad hoc committee met last week, uh, and basically, we're just having ongoing discussions about, uh, how we want to, uh, move forth, uh, just kind of back and forth, a lot of just great discussion. Uh, we're gonna meet again next week, um, try to prepare our, our presentation for the, uh, December fourth, uh, committee forum.
Yes.
And like we already said earlier, if there's anybody that wants to be part of that, um, committee, um, not only members of the board, but if you know somebody in the community that could help us with that, please come forward.
Bill, any committee?
Well, we had a meeting, what was the date? We had a Sunday meeting.
That's it.
There was an executive session discussing that. Then we had a meeting tonight, and we discussed the McGrath lift, we have to replace a lift at McGrath School. We have a student coming in that has to use it, and the lift that's there does not work. We have to have it in in about three weeks' time. We discussed, uh, a roofing project at Reeds Brook School. We had some roofing blow off from the windstorm, getting that worked on. The turf replacement project. We discussed, uh, collaborative effort of the town of Winterport to upgrade their field that we utilize, but they aren't part of our program. And there was some other stuff that we're running on now. We discussed, again, that drainage issue that we had next to the school with the equipment.
The athletic field maintenance contract is going to be going out for RFP. That notice will be in the Bangor Daily this weekend, so that, uh, interested parties can, um, seek the aid work.
When does that contract start to like birth?
Yes.
Is it for both Winterport and, um, Hampton?
Um, we are going to be putting the Wagner Soccer Field onto that contract. Uh, it hasn't been on in that in the past, though.
Okay.
Yeah, we did, uh, mention that for the turf, that we should do a quick, low-cost video inspection of all the subdrain structures, so that even if any of those are plugged or in need of repair, we would take care of it while the field is ripped up and being replaced in the future, not after we just put a new turf down, so just timing and coordination. Right. That was it.
Great, uh, right. Education committee?
Yep. We met right before this. It was a short meeting. I was running late, and then I was running even more late after the cop pulled me over. I was trying to get here faster. Um, so we discussed-
You weren't texting.
I was not texting. I was trying to get to the board meeting. Um, so we only, the only thing we talked about was report cards. There was, uh, we were gonna talk about strategic plans on the agenda, but did not get to that. Um, Scott had reached out to me. He had, um, some concerned parents had reached out to him about the K5 report card. Um, I, every time the report comes out, I, I often hear comments, and I very openly agree with many of the comments. So it's an ongoing discussion, right, Mary? Um, what did become apparent is, um, I very openly think that the report card, it's very difficult for me to read and to understand, but what I did learn is that there are other people in the, um, education committee who came in and said, "No, I love it. I can read it perfectly." So I think part of the discussion needs to be, um, uh, trying to get a real sense for, uh, is this a me issue, and the few people I talked to are, is this a, uh, an issue is being able to read and understand the report card an issue, a larger issue. So we're gonna discuss that more, as well as really take, we need to also take into account, if we're looking at changing anything about the report card, um, any sort of resources that that would require, and, uh, really balancing, uh, what we, where we should be spending our resources and making sure that we do our best to communicate, um, our children's progress to their parents. So this will be ongoing.
A question, then. What's the issue with the report card? Is it the proficiency-based grading, or is it the layout of the report card?
Um, my issue with it is both of that. Not the proficiency-based grading, it's the, it's the layout and the communication of how, uh, the, uh, the communication of it. But, but again, that is not just, uh, just love it, so.
I don't mind that, because it tells me exactly what they're working on and working- I wish there was a little bit more personalization, um, because I want to know how my child is doing, and the narratives never address my child specifically. I think they've only had one teacher that actually did that for every self group.
Someone dusting boilerplate.
But, so it's kind of just like, I don't really read it all the time, but-
My only comment on those items are the timing, and it's not our timing, but the state timing. If, uh, in receiving one of those documents recently, it was from last year, it turned out with last year's, uh, results, and you're looking at it, and you're like, wait a minute, this doesn't seem to lie with what's going on this year, and you realize that it was the, uh, was it the NUIA testing that had a, uh, from last, last year that-
Thank you.
Mary, do I cover it up?
Was it the NUIA testing from last year that was just sent around?
That's it.
Or the MEAs? Might have been the MEAs. But again, you know, there's an issue where for, uh, some parents, um, you're receiving that information after you've had a whole summer period where you could have probably either followed through on different things, whether for supplemental or for, or other things. Having it come out so much later from the state, I don't know what we can do to push the state to turn that around quicker, but, uh, some of it is just so delayed.
Right, and that's out of our control, right, Mary? That comes from the state, the MEAs for.
They're, they're talking about trying to have a faster turnaround. Hopefully, they will. I was just at a testing meeting all morning at M.A., you know, that's their hope.
So we'll have continued discussions, and, um, I would love, not at this moment, but more feedback about what other people have heard about the report card and what your thoughts are, so.
Also, the high school report card is mainly, it's just numbers, ninety-nines, whatever? No, you're okay.
So that's familiar, and I'm gonna be, make sure we are moving towards a proficiency-based system, so we need to be able to, and we need to start embracing and accepting that, but, um, it's really important. I think if, if, we talked about this in the communication committee a lot, um, so much of, um, sometimes the controversy in our district is really about communication and misunderstandings, and so to limit those misunderstandings and miscommunications as much as possible, I think is really important, so.
Did you say we're moving away from that?
That's old school.
That's old school.
Why are you waiting for yesterday?
So I really appreciate Mary's openness to this conversation. Like, she's fantastic.
Okay, policy committee, John?
Um, no, nothing, time we met this week. We'll have a couple of policies for us. We had them next meeting.
Okay. UTC board?
Yeah, we met on, uh, November second. That was during the power outage, so we didn't have a quorum and couldn't conduct business.
Oh.
I was there, but I didn't have power. But one thing that they did talk about was student enrollment. It's a little over six hundred right now, PGC. Some of the programs are, you know, like the Ford passing, they can't take any more. It's becoming a national. The other interesting thing is a, one of the board members is Tim Shaw, and he's a retired gentleman. He spent most of his career in the masonry business. He worked like for American Concrete, had his own masonry business. I think he represents that firm in sixty-four, some of those years.
Yes.
He's an avid collector of antique automobiles, and, uh, he donated a Model T to the school of students to work on. And for the, it was what, what you would call a basket case. They loved it in baskets. And, uh, I'm impressed, they put that thing back together and got it rolling, so they could drive it around the school. And it's sitting, if you go in the UTC front door, they have an exhibit that's supposed to be like a nineteen forties gas station. to be like a nineteen forties gas station. They've got pumps and old snowmobiles and old Ford motors, and the Model Ts now have centerpieces. It's pretty sharp looking, it's a truck, it's not a car. And the actual year is questionable, because of those cars, it's hard to tell, but something like a late twenties, twenty-six or twenty-seven Model T. So if you have a chance to look for it, it's interesting to see that they did get it funded. They're not like a large...
Those guys are using the system's own computers and crap in it.
You know, level...
Alan, is there been any discussion what they would do with enrollment, what they use to decline?
Well, if enrollment continues to decline, which, it's real, we really don't know, you know, generally, student enrollment is declining amongst most...
That's correct.
But if it did continue to dramatically increase, they would seriously have to look at more space, more room. They'd have to expand, of course, the inherent cost and everything else.
Either that, Heath, or they may put a quota per school. They may.
They've, they've come to that on some course.
Yes.
It's always...
Yes.
Great, thank you all. Do you have anything for the surprise board?
We did meet, but I think it's on the agenda list.
We have a motion, we have a recommendation coming right after.
So we're gonna talk about that.
Substance use committee?
We canceled the last meeting because of the power outage, but we are gonna be meeting in a couple of weeks, I think Tuesday after Thanksgiving. I believe what we're gonna do is we're gonna take the substance use committee and join it with the wellness committee, is more administrative school-based piece rather than a separate board ad hoc committee. So we're gonna discuss that in our next meeting. And then I'll probably say it all with the wellness group.
And community relations committee, Amanda, do you want to take that one, since Scott's done?
No, I don't remember.
You don't? John?
Well, I was looking over everything that's on the minutes that was, that's in our email. I think that October is really...
We talked about social media and the discussion about what we do with comments that are placed on our Facebook page.
We talked a lot about developing a social media plan and the different components of a well-developed plan, and we looked at a few resources that Scott and I have found in different places, and which aspects we wanted to try to move on and have Adam Council work for, and which aspects would be a priority for us to start to get looked up with most immediately. And Facebook was a considerable discussion, because how Facebook is being handled across the state is markedly different in Southern Maine than what we're doing with our Facebook right now. So we just got down into the leads around use of social media.
So, I'm not a really Facebook person, but so how does it work now? Does any comment automatically go onto that site, or do we have to okay that comment? Or how does that work? If somebody was to comment right now on our...
It goes on.
It goes on.
We have to monitor it, and we have the message on the Facebook page indicating that comments will be removed, positive or negative.
Yeah.
Right, but you do have to monitor it to be aware when the comments are written.
Also, I'm not a Facebook person either, but I did some research on the statement we put on the page, Heath, but I'd summarize this this way also. It's a dissemination of information. It's not a dialogue, we engage with the community, but we push information out.
Who is responsible for monitoring that right now?
Scott. Scott.
Great, thank you. We have no policies for consideration and no old business.
Correct.
So we'll go right into new, new business and discuss the regional service center.
Just to remind all board members, particularly our new ones, we actually endorse this grant opportunity early in the year with the innovative program that's in our middle schools now. I believe, Don, we have five students from Reed's Brook, is Wagner now at the innovative school?
Yep, we have, I think, three from Wagner, two from Reed's Brook. And currently, there are two, three other families at Reed's Brook that are interested in maybe these students.
Okay. So this, the basic purpose of this grant is twofold. It invites other districts to come in, RSU nineteen Newport, RSU twenty-five Buckport, and also University Maine and Eastern Maine Community College. But if you look at category one, two, and three, it allows us to expand in a regional scope with respect to a satellite program in Hancock County, shared educational services. Category two is something this board actually has in our strategic plan, and that is basically to groom future leaders. We talk about here, school leadership academies that are looking to expand. And category three talks about how we regionalize such things as food service, transportation, and regional purchasing. So it allows us to basically have a larger net to cast, if you will, versus the, even though the existing scope of the existing grant is large, this one actually enlarges it and enlarges it even more. So I would ask for your endorsement to proceed with this, and also understand the submission of this regional center is concept and only at this stage. And once the boards will all, and we're very optimistic, all the boards will approve it, then we'll have a steering committee come together and begin to tease out subsets of it. And I do appreciate the leadership of Dr. Webb in the superintendent of Bangor, because she's really spearheading this, along with the Southern Penile Eastern Program Children in Sectionality Group, called SFRUSS, to move this forward. So I would ask for your endorsement of the grant as submitted with the intent and the purposes I just conveyed.
Can I add something, Ren?
Yes, please.
We talked about this at the board meeting quite extensively, and this again is kind of, we need to get involved in this now and sign on to, into it now, but then we can always opt out at a later date. But if we don't do this now, then we would not, we won't receive funding for its system administration.
Yes.
Are we going to be eligible to receive funding for its system administration? Because this will essentially meet that requirement of going above and beyond to, to share resources and costs.
Thank you. And to amplify, remember, at one point in time, and I'm not sure what the status of it is, you were penalized if you weren't a member of the recent group. Remember this, the bill that legislates the accidental penalty associated? Last time I knew that, I had a potential kill, but I haven't heard anything out of that yet. So that's, that's a good summary. But we do need formal endorsement of the board this evening to move forward.
So can I, I'm requesting a motion? So...
Second.
Any questions or discussion? How long is the grant?
I believe it's on an annual basis, and once you get...
Annual renewal.
Yes, reannual renewal. Once you get the foundation established and the goals and objectives, yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Great.
Thank you.
Presentation's been postponed until December sixth, so we have any meeting dates that we need to set?
Next week, as you all know, is Thanksgiving. And then, as Heath mentioned earlier, we come back, we have finance, I think we have community relations.
Good.
Question?
Did you need anything for the building, for the committee? Does that think we're all set, Karen?
Can you add the substance use committee to that category?
Yes, what was that again?
Twenty-eighth, I think it is.
At the ad hoc turf, I mean, the twentieth, it's not on the calendar.
Yeah, twentieth, that's six.
Twentieth? Ad hoc, we'll call that the ad hoc.
Ad hoc turf.
Thank you. Ad hoc turf.
Great. Any other business? You can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor? Great, have a great night, everybody.